This is Commission President Bill Bryant calling the regular meeting of February 23rd, 2010 to order. We are going to recess from the general, or not recess, but we're going to deviate from the general agenda and move into a policy roundtable, which we normally do at the end of our meetings, but we're going to do at the beginning of our meeting today. We are meeting at the International Conference Center at Sea-Tac Airport. Present with me today are Commissioners Holland, Tarleton, Creighton, and Albro, Port CEO Teo Shetani, General Counsel Watson, and Commission Record Supervisor Winn. Additionally, today, joining us are mayors from the communities around Sea-Tac Airport, Mayor Terry Anderson from Sea-Tac, Mayor George Hadley of Normandy Park, Mayor Jim Hagerton of Tukwila, Mayor Linda Cockmar of Federal Way, Deputy Mayor Rose Clark of Burien, and standing in for Mayor Schechler is Tony Pasecki. Thank you, Tony. Welcome, all of you. We look forward to a very informative discussion as we begin our Part 150 study. I would like to point out, for those of you in the audience, that the emergency exits are the doors to which you entered, and also the single door behind me. And before beginning, I'd like to ask you all to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As I mentioned, we are going to have a policy roundtable at the beginning of our session today, and I am very honored, and all of us on the commission are honored, to have the mayors from the surrounding communities joining us. For those of you who aren't familiar with this format, it's one we adopted about a year ago in an effort to reach out to stakeholders in the community on particular issues, and it's an opportunity for us to sit down and informally talk about issues that are coming before the commission. We will begin with today's proceedings, an extensive public process. This is the first workshop tomorrow, on February 24th, between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m. at Mount Rainier High School in Des Moines. There will be another workshop. The commission encourages anyone who has comments to please participate in that meeting tomorrow. We are not planning to take public testimony today, but we will be having another meeting on March 23rd, in addition to the meeting tomorrow. We hope that that meeting will be down here somewhere in the Des Moines-Normandy Park area, and we will be taking public testimony at that meeting as well. Mayors, welcome very much. We're glad you could be a part of this discussion and help us kick off this study that we will be working on for the next several months or years. To begin, before jumping into it, what I'd like to do is to ask the staff to give us a quick overview on what we are about to begin. And Diane, I'll turn this over to you right now.
All right. Let me find the PowerPoint here. Is this on today? Okay, good. And good afternoon, Commissioners, Mr. Shetani, and our honored guests. On behalf of the port staff, I want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to discuss the Part 150 process with you. In order to maximize our time today, I'm going to limit my presentation to a few quick slides here, and I'll go quick. I may even skip a few slides in the process, because it's either covered in the memo or it's self-explanatory in the slides. A Part 150 noise study is an opportunity for us to evaluate the airport's noise impacts on the community, and then evaluate and possibly modify some of our noise programs. This study is a partnership with the airport, the FAA, the airport community itself, the people who use the airport, and the community, as I said. Although not the only element to the Part 150 study, a major element to this is to understand the impacts that the third runway has had on the community since we opened it last year. And here's our first skip slide. Talk about the products of a Part 150. Day/night level, this is the noise exposure map. It's a day/night level, and the FAA requires us to use the day/night level. It's a metric that analyzes the entire year of operations at the airport, and it shows how an airport noise affects sensitive land uses, such as schools and homes. Anything inside that 65 line, that's the black line on the presentation there, the FAA terms that as impacted to the community. The final approved component of the Part 150 study is the Noise Compatibility Plan, and that Noise Compatibility Plan contains all of the elements, including the contour, which is the noise exposure map, and all of the approved recommendations for mitigation outside of that, and also the schedule for implementing those. This is another self-explanatory slide showing the sound insulation programs that we've already completed. I want to introduce our Part 150 consulting team. I have Rob Adams here with me today. We've chosen Landerman Brown as our prime consultant. They've completed over 100 Part 150s in the United States. Synergy Consultants and Norc-Normal Company have been around this area for a long time and have actually worked on other projects with the port. The schedule for the Part 150, we began this in early 2009 with data collection, working with our communities, going out to the communities with several community meetings. In 2010, we're really beginning that data collection phase, technical analysis, and in 2011, we plan to finish this project, wrap it up by the end of 2011, submit it to the FAA for that 180-day review period. A major focus of this project is the Public Participation Plan, which is about one-third of the project budget. There is also a substantial technical component that is described in detail in the memo. And I'd like to point out that we have, that we view the Public Participation Plan as one of the major elements of this study, and outcomes of the public workshops will drive the scope of work. There are a few points I would like to make with this slide that will undoubtedly be discussed during the entire Part 150 process. Noise has continually declined over the years due to fewer aircraft and quieter aircraft. However, there is now a third runway, and flights north and south of the airport, some of those are going over communities that did not have noise before. Those people are likely noticing more noise. The port provided community mitigation for the third runway based on the EIS for the third runway, projecting out to the 2010 contour for 375,000 operations during that time. Right now, we're at about 330,000 operations, so we may actually see contours declining as we start the evaluations. And it's always difficult to explain to the community that even though some areas have more direct overflights, actual noise levels are declining. This slide just gives you an idea that the operations were continually increasing until the year 2000, when everything went bad and we started to lose operations at the airport. So you can see the red line on that decreasing, but passenger growth has continued on, simply because every seat on those aircraft are now filled. So fewer operations, but passengers are continuing to grow. We have developed many ways to engage everyone in this process. The key public method will be the public workshops, and I want to stress that these are workshops. They are not open houses. It's where everybody can go and actually participate in the solutions to the Part 150. Elected officials will have their own venue with the Highline Forum, where members can discuss and interact with consultants and staff. This is just public notifications. We have a variety of methods, from email to publications that we've sent out, and those are all listed there. Public workshops, we have six public workshops during this study, and as earlier mentioned, we do have our first one tomorrow night, 5:00 p.m. at Mount Rainier High School. Technical Review Committee was formed with the members listed on this slide, and that is really mainly for a review committee, because we're producing a ton of data through this process, and it's understanding and having those experts weigh in on that data in reviewing it. Flight tracks, flight tracks discussions with the community often become very contentious. In many past studies, we have looked at alternative flight track changes, and they have either been rejected by the FAA as creating air traffic conflicts and issues, or simply reviewed as shifting noise from one community to another one. During this study, flight track suggestions will come into the process through community proposals, and we want to let people know beforehand how we're going to handle those proposals. So we will evaluate each alternative to determine feasibility. We will not revisit actions already determined to be infeasible through this process. Since the Part 150 study is designed mainly to improve impacts to the 65 DNL contour, in order to be a feasible alternative to study, a flight track alternative would not, or would have to provide a noise reduction benefit within that contour. We can therefore say that we will not be considering flight track changes that do not benefit the 65 DNL contour. And I'll wrap up here, and thank you, and throughout this process, I'd be glad to answer any questions as needed.
Great, thank you, Stan. Well, now, just to kind of give you all the understanding of how this works, generally, we're probably pretty formal and recognize each other, but this is our opportunity not to be formal at all, and so for the next hour or so, we would just like to have an open-ended roundtable discussion where people can jump in whenever they want and talk about those issues which you would like us to be thinking about, or that we have questions for you. We can jump in and ask them of you as well. Perhaps to kick this off, if, starting with Deputy Mayor Rose, if you could just each give us one or two minutes introductions of those issues that you are most concerned about, and what you think we ought to be thinking about as we proceed with this, and then, once we get through those introductory remarks, we'll just throw it open for conversation. Thank you so much.
I don't think that's on.
Yes, the microphone's on. Yes, little green light works.
I don't think it's on.
You know what? Some of the mics work really well and some of them don't.
You have to pass that little bar we go.
Oh, you guys are so lucky, you have two green lights. So, to try this again, I want to thank you very much for having us here, for the openness, because it's very important to us and to our community that we work together. From Burien's perspective, I can stand at my house and see a lot of Burien, and especially with the planes going up in the air. I see them going over parts of northwest Burien where planes did not fly previously, and this is an area where they did have planes when seafare was going on, but other than that, no. And so I'm concerned about that. I can see the same thing to the south of Burien going over, if you can visualize the map where Burien and Normandy Park are close together. So I feel like the planes are turning a little sooner over new communities, I guess. This bears directly on the life of residents that have not had such noise impacts before. I'm concerned about, since they're going over different areas or new areas, I'm worried about parks that are in that area. I know we're working to still build school buildings so that they are quieter inside, but there's no way you can make an outside park quiet, so I'm concerned about that. And I will leave that for now and go on to my fellow Des Moines city manager.
Thank you, Rose. Tony, welcome.
My name's Tony Pasecki. I am the city manager for the city of Des Moines, and first, I want to say Mayor Schechler sends his regrets, but there's two reasons why he's not here today. First of all, he really does not sound very good. And second, he claims to be contagious, and he wouldn't want to make anyone else here sick. I think fundamentally, the most important thing for the city of Des Moines is that we look at all options, and that we don't throw out anything that appears to be within reason. And the important thing is going to be, as we go through this, is how do you define reasonable? And what we ask is that everyone keep an open mind as much as possible. Our communities are affected by the noise. My house sits right underneath the third runway flight path, so I am now getting noise that I didn't used to get. And again, my personal plea to the port, commission, staff, the consultants, is let's not throw something out until we're absolutely sure it's not something that's reasonable.
I'm Linda Cockmar. I'm the mayor of Federal Way. I've been a resident of this area for approximately 40 years. We moved here because my first husband was a pilot. He was a commander on a 141 on McCord, and also was a commuter airline pilot out of Sea-Tac. His plane crashed in '81 in Spokane, and so I feel like I know a little bit about the FAA and flight paths. In Federal Way, the descent, the turn for the descent, happens right over our busiest intersection, 320th and Pack Highway South. It happens to be right where they're, right near the sound, where we have some very expensive homes in Marine Hills. We also have a high school that is right, the descent begins at about 320th and Pack Highway, and it's right over a high school. It's right over another body of water called Steel Lake. And when that descent begins, it's extremely noisy. It's also very difficult at night when Eva Airlines takes off from the airport about 1:30 or 2:30 in the morning, and it's usually very full. It's going to the Orient, and it's usually very, very full. It's very lumbrious, what can I say, very, very heavily loaded, and trying to climb, and that noise will knock some people in those areas out of bed at 2:30. I get calls, they're very, very upset. So what I do understand is that with the last Part 150 study, that the recommendation from that panel was to make that turn for the descent over a less populated area, perhaps over the Tacoma Tide Plats, or over where the city of Milton is, where there's only 5,000 people, and more open space. The city of Federal Way is densely populated, and we are the seventh largest city in the state with 88,700 people. And so that recommendation did not happen because of what you just said, that the change in the flight pattern would affect other cities. I don't understand why a city with a less densely populated area would have more say than the city, that's the seventh largest city in the state, with a more densely populated area with high schools right in that flight path descent. And yes, I am concerned, and we do work in emergency management in Federal Way with the fact that a plane could crash in that area. And you can't tell me it won't. I've been there. I know it can happen, and I know the ramifications of that. And so, yet, we have a lot of issues in Federal Way, primarily regarding noise. And with the third runway, it's not that the noise is going to be greater, it's that the flights will increase, and they will increase over time, because the economy will get better, and more people will be flying, and there will be more takeoffs and landings. And so the amount of the noise will increase, and so that will affect our property values. I've had people in Marine Hills who said that they cannot go out on their decks in the summertime, because that, the noise reverberates over the water, and they've actually moved without telling anybody, because they didn't want it to affect the value of the property of their house. So you have to take all of those into consideration. And if we're going to do the Part 150 this time, and without me making any allegations with what happened last time, I'm going to be watching it very closely. I'm going to be lobbying in DC. I've gone to DC on six other occasions. I am going again at the 1st of March. I will be going to Adam Smith, and I will be talking about this, and I will be saying that those hush puppies don't really do a lot of good on those planes, and that perhaps the descent needs to be, the takeoff needs to be more level, rather than the grinding with the noise from the planes. And so, I'm not sure, there's a lot of different issues involved. I'm not sure what the solution is, but I do know that there are areas where these planes can turn that won't be over densely populated areas, and also, you know, if there's any encouragement that you can to help them buy newer planes. I mean, these planes are getting older and older, and so, you know, that's what we have to say in Federal Way. We are a growing area. We are going to have a new building that is going up, and we have more buildings behind it. We will have the first 30-story building that will be built next year, there will actually be two, that will be the tallest building between Portland and Seattle. And so we will be a force to be reckoned with. We will become, we will be growing, we will be growing up, not out, and we will be becoming a larger city. And so we are going to be a force in the region, and we will be reckoned with, and believe me, we want our voices to be heard. And so, and thank you for being so understanding, and I am very happy with your new leadership, and I am very happy with the new board, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. George?
My name's George Hadley. I'm mayor of Normandy Park. I think we are interested in noise reduction and noise mitigation for the people who live here now, rather than land use planning for the people who may live here in 20 or 30 years. And that raises a concern that the Part 150 study, as I understand it, is set up to look at 10, five to 10 years from now. Land use planning is generally done in a much longer time period. The MSRC is right now looking at 2040 for their planning. If you're going to do something that's going to help the land use planners around here, I think you've got to look a lot further out than just five to 10 years. And I guess, for Normandy Park, what I'm concerned about, the noise has moved a lot closer to us, and there were also some barriers that helped Normandy Park residents. There was a wooded area where the third runway is now, and so that's gone. Now the noise has a direct shot into Normandy Park that it didn't use to. I'm also concerned about the fact that the study has eliminated all the recommendations from the previous Citizens Advisory Committee, just off the top. I think we ought to, we, you guys ought to look at those and make sure that they are, their rejection was reasonable in your eyes, not in the eyes of a port commission of many years ago. And one of the things that I would, I'd like to say is, as Mayor Cockmire said, we go to Washington. Our citizens have direct influence with our legislators, both state and federal. So if you can tell us that, for example, you rejected, or that some recommendation was rejected because it's not legal, well, we can change laws. And if the laws can be changed to make, to reduce noise, then let us know which laws they are and what's got to be changed. And I guess, as several of the other members before me have said, the FAA may mandate this DNL averaging, but one of the things that really impacts our residents is the single event noise. An airplane, a very heavily laden airplane taking off at 1:00, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, that impacts our residents, and we'd like to be, have some way to get that into the study. And it probably has to be in addition, it can't be part of the DNL, because, I mean, I was thinking, if we did a little thought experiment, suppose we put all of a day's passengers onto one airplane and took that off, you know, say at 2:00 in the afternoon. I mean, that airplane would be so huge, it would deafen everybody for miles. And then, of course, you wouldn't have to worry about noise anymore. But what would the DNL be for such a humongous airplane? I mean, it would be one event for five, 10 minutes. Everybody in, for miles around, would be deafened, I mean, literally forever deafened. And yet, the DNL for that would be probably relatively minor. So thank you for inviting us, and we look forward to working with you for the next couple of years.
Thank you.
Well, as somebody who was born and raised in this district, I get a lot of phone calls. I'm fairly well-known, I've been on the council 20 years, so. The city of Sea-Tac is interested in participating in the 150 program, and we, I think noise control is the thing that bothers us the most. I go to church in Des Moines, and believe me, some days, it's not really worth going and getting there on time, because a lot of people in Des Moines are impacted by the noise that we thought we weren't going to have in that area with the new runway. And I realize, both my son and husband are pilots, and I understand that the thrust to go and take off is greater than that of landing. And our understanding was that it would be primarily an airstrip for landing, and it doesn't seem to have gone along with that. I have people who are monitoring it at all hours of the night and sending me little notes of times, and they have a scale from 1 to 5 that they circle for me, and, which is fine, but it is the basis of our economy, so I think that the best thing for us to do is to try to get along as well as we can. As far as the city of Sea-Tac is concerned, and I know that this is a tough subject for the rest of the cities that are represented here, but we do have a very good working relationship with you people, and it has grown better as the years have gone on. It's gotten better and better and better. And I know Brett's over here taking pictures of this, and he will probably argue with me about that, but it is the truth. We're anxious to be represented on the Technical Advisory Committee and engage the staff and residents in the public workshops. I think the best way you can really get the input is to do the workshops. For me, for you people to listen to us is one thing, because it's an economical thing with us altogether, but the people who are living out here, it is not necessarily. And so I encourage you to do that as much as possible, and I think Diane has made a real study, study, and put a lot of her time and energy into doing just exactly that. One of the goals of the Part 150 study is to provide mitigation measures that are sensitive to the needs of the community and the stability, and of course, one of them is a hush house now. In airline terms, that's a misnomer, but then nevertheless, a hush house is, I suppose, better than nothing in workup repair. I would appreciate it, though, if we could have as much support and visually attend, maybe even every, say, quarter to one of the council meetings, or somebody to come in and talk to us. I know, we don't have a problem with it, but I know other cities do, because I hear about it at the grocery store on a regular basis. And generally speaking, we are very much in favor of this. We just hope it goes as far as some of the other, goes further than some of the other committees that have been formed with the port, and it's just kind of fallen along the waysides and kind of left us sitting there with, you're friends with the airport and nobody else's type of attitude, but we really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. Mayor Hagerton.
Thank you very much, and thanks, Commissioners, for allowing us all to be here to voice some opinions. We are definitely interested in the subject. Tukwila is a member of the Highline Forum, and we're really interested in everything going on with the Port of Seattle. We stay directly involved in that. We're not directly impacted by the flight patterns to the north and to the south, and we are not currently located in the 65 DNL area. We do have a proposed annexation area down by the Duamish, the Delta Marine area, that was designated back in 1996 as a potential annexation area, and we'll be pursuing that, so we're looking out for those folks. And we do partner with all the people represented at the table today in different areas, like Suburban Cities Association, Association of Washington Cities, and most of us are involved in the South County Jail or the SCORE entity. Yesterday, I had an hour-and-a-half-long tour at the SCORE site, which is located off of 200th Street, located physically in the city of Des Moines, with access from the city of Sea-Tac. Construction equipment was running everywhere out there, backhoes, loaders. When the planes came over, you could hear no construction equipment at all. The airplanes completely drowned it out, the noise from the construction equipment. So I know firsthand what a 65 DNL or louder represents, because, and I know what those residents out there are going through, because there are some homes not too far from our construction site. I have to say, though, in all honesty, that it wasn't every plane that was that noisy. Some of those planes that went over were much noisier than other ones, and I think we've talked about that in previous Part 150 studies. Where Tukwila gets involved, the Part 150 study is not only noise, but land use compatibility, and I want to express some things that I've expressed on numerous occasions in the past, that were not affected directly by the noise, as mentioned, but the run-up of engines, and especially on Sundays. I live in an area off of South 160th Street, right inside the city limits of Tukwila, and on Sunday morning, when I'm reading the paper, things in my house vibrate. It's not from airplanes, it's from the testing of the engines and the run-up of the engines. And I think the port tried to address that earlier, and they said there was some corrective action being taken, but it's not enough. We still need to give more attention to that. I have that comment from nearly all of my neighbors, the run-up of the engines and the testing. We're not too directly affected by the flight patterns, but that noise from the engines is just terrible. One thing that I'm really concerned about, we watch closely, is One thing that I'm really concerned about, we watch closely, is water runoff, and I know the port addressed that, but with the addition of more impervious services, like you're creating with the rental car parking garage, and all the paving that's going on, that's bound to increase. And we want to ensure that the water coming into the Gilliam Creek watershed and on into the Green River is clean water, that is not pollutant, and it doesn't affect the fish. So we're really concerned about that. We want to be kept involved in Tukwala of all the construction activity, the parking lots and the rental car parking facility, as it relates to the traffic patterns and the traffic flow. That's a major concern to the City of Tukwala. I think that summarizes what I wanted to say, but we will stay an active member of the High Line Forum, and we will attend your Part 150 meetings, and we're a strong partner with all the cities represented here. We want to be a part of, a big player and be a part of the action. Thank you so much.
And thank you all very much for coming in for those excellent comments. Let me throw this open now, and we'll throw it open to the Commissioners first, since we haven't had a chance to talk yet. Commissioner Charlton, and then, I'm not calling on anybody from now on, it's open.
It's open. It's great to have you all here, and I, there's nothing like hearing it directly from you, who are responsible for the well-being of all of your citizens. And we're all in this soup together, so we better find our way through it. I had a couple of questions that I wanted to clarify, and I'll actually start, because it was the most recent and therefore on my mind. Mayor Heggerton, I wanted to verify the name of the watershed that you are trying to ensure protecting.
Gilliam Creek is a small creek that runs from International Boulevard and winds down around and eventually goes into the Green River.
Into the Green River.
G-I-L-L-I-A-M, Gilliam Creek.
Gilliam Creek.
And it runs right under 42nd Avenue South.
Okay, I know where that is. I wanted to mention that, because one of the main features of the rental car facility construction is a major stormwater management system for ensuring that that additional impervious infrastructure is not creating a worse runoff situation down there. But it reminds me that even though stormwater runoff is not going to be part of the 150 per se, it is a classic part of everything that we're doing on the environmental front, and so we should make sure that if there's something to do with monitoring the creek, making sure that it's part of the environmental reporting to the Department of Ecology, Diane, whatever, we should do that. The second...
Just to reassure you, as you are fully aware, at one point, we had to suspend construction on the facility. But just to reassure you, we did that in a way that would ensure that there would be no groundwater runoff problems, and that we continue, we just didn't shut it down. We did it in a way that would be environmentally sensitive, so we wouldn't have problems. We're very, like you, we're very sensitive to that issue.
I appreciate that.
And then, there was just one other question I had. I was really interested about the single event noise. That was something that actually, it had never occurred to me to look at it that way, but it is absolutely true that in most people's, you know, background noise becomes part of the background noise. But if there is a single episode of noise that happens, you know, in a sudden way or unexpected way, or jolts them out of sleep, that it is absolutely more of an impact on their sense of well-being than the steady background noise of a train, for example. So I'm wanting to look at how we deal with those single event data points in the Technical Advisory Committee, Stan and Diane. We shouldn't allow the averaging to smooth out those edges, which is really perhaps one of the most critical points. And then, the final question I had, there was a comment, Linda, Mayor Kochmeyer, about the age of the fleet of airplanes. I do think this will be brought up in the Part 150 study, but we've been getting presentations from the staff about the rate at which actually the fleets are being replaced by Alaska Air and by some of our other tenants. And so, we should look at the age of the fleets during this Part 150 study compared to the last 150 study. And sort of a tangential thing, I don't know the age of the fleets of the planes that are flying out of Boeing Field. And I also don't know if the tracks or the noise reverberations from Boeing Field affect Tukwala or, you know, parts of Des Moines, perhaps. Rose, you had perhaps an observation there?
Thinking back to the last Part 150, we learned that Tukwala has noise from Boeing Field, but they also have noise from Sea-Tac. Neither seemed to be great enough to cause any mitigation programs. But together, it was not a good situation for them. So I was always hoping, through that process, that the two airports could work together, especially in areas where they share flight tracks and then share noise.
Very good. Okay, thank you, Mr. President, and I'm going to enjoy this.
Other comments?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'd like to add to Commissioner Charlton's remarks, to thank you all for coming here today. I think it's very important.
Thank you, Mr. President.
John has two green lights.
Yeah, and I should be used to this. You know, I think the Commission and the port in general, and the cities around the airport have been working much better together, you know, with the High Line Forum really up and running. And Mayor Hadley made the point in terms of, you know, the Part 150 process being one thing, and sort of longer-term land use, that process also sort of being in play, but on a longer term. And I think, I mean, I know we'll all be engaged in the Part 150 process, but that, in certain respects, is constrained by, you know, federal regulations and what the FAA requires. And a number of you made the point, well, we can go change the law as well with Congress, but I also think it's important that we continue to work together inside the Part 150 process as well as outside the Part 150 process. And Commissioner Bryant and CEO Yoshitani and I had a meeting a couple weeks ago with Senator Karen Kaiser, where she mentioned some noise issues with the neighborhoods right south of the airport. And I think we're going to have to wait and see what the noise study comes up with in terms of any revised contours, but even if those contours are not substantially changed, I'm interested in looking at, well, how can we work with the communities around the airport and say, you know, if there's issues with noise, but that we can't address through the Part 150 process, are there other ways we can address it? So I'm going to keep an open mind until we get the results of the study, but I'm really glad that you all are here today, and I look forward to remaining engaged with you all, you know, both inside the Part 150 process and, you know, to the extent that might not be sufficient, you know, working in other ways as well.
Yeah, George.
Well, one of the things you have on your Technical Advisory Committee, you ask for land use. Well, land use planners, like I said, they're spoke of, but thinking is not five years. And in fact, by the end of the study, it'd be three years. That's not where they think. And so, if there was some way we could get on the Technical Advisory Committee, some other people that are thinking more of short-term and noise reduction, noise mitigation, not land use.
That's what I've been thinking all day. Yeah, I wasn't going to call on people, just jump in for Commissioner, and then give the mayor a call.
Well, I too want to thank each and every one of our mayors for participating, and this is my first go-around at this, and it's a, somebody I had a chance, opportunity to meet earlier, and I think public service is a wonderful opportunity, and you all are exhibiting that by being here, representing the voices of your community. And as Commissioner Charlton said, we're all in this together, and we're all soup, so to speak, and we've got to make our way through it. And I think we will do that. I, the question that I had was about the technical committee, and I think, Mary, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing your last name this far.
Well, mine's Anderson.
Terry Anderson, I'm sorry, Terry. Do you all have any suggestions of names or folks that we should be looking at, talking to?
Yes.
Maybe you could be, maybe you could provide that to us at some point, I think that'd be good to see that list.
Rose?
Thank you. I would like to join Mayor Hadley in suggesting that you guys take a look at the last Part 150 committee. I was on that committee. We made an awful lot of recommendations that I don't think were fairly looked at by a commission that was not particularly friendly to the communities. So I would encourage you to look at that. And in the Part 150, at that point, we did look at single event noises. And your noise consultants should be able to take the noise readings that they get and do it, present you with charts with DNL or with single events. And I think you have a quiet committee that you should hear from, and actually should come to the forum and talk to us about recommendations that have been made over time to address some of these issues. And then, I have a concern that was brought to mind by your comments, John. At the end of the runways, it's got to be almost hell on earth for those people that are living very close. If you recall, a few years ago, they wanted to, they wanted Burian to leave the Laura Lake apartments up and inhabited, and Burian fought that very hard, because those apartments were something like 200, 300 feet from the end of the runway, with the planes flying to about 250 feet above, or something close to that. Imagine there are homes there also. We closed the apartments with our, working together, but there are people living in conditions like that in single-family homes that were built in the 40s, 50s, and 60s, both in Des Moines and in Burian. And I just really don't understand why, I've asked this many times, and I've never gotten a satisfactory answer. All of us, plus everybody else in King County, pays property taxes to the Port of Seattle, but we sit here and wait for a Part 150 process to release federal funds, so that we can mitigate for those people that are going to be living for the next two or three years, and already are, in very bad circumstances, none of their own making. So I will ask again, why there can't be a policy change at the Port of Seattle, so that some of those dollars that we, that the port gets from King County taxpayers could be used to help those people? Those people right at the ends of the runways are the very first ones we should be looking at, and it doesn't take a rocket scientist or a Part 150 study to know that they are in a very bad spot.
And when you say help specifically, what are some, what are some things you'd like to see us do?
I think that there are areas already, just logic can identify, at the ends of the runways where the homes should actually be purchased. I don't want to see them purchased, because that takes people out of my city and out of the city of Des Moines, and we are all a community. So I'm, that's why I fought the third runway really, really hard, I'll be honest with you, because I knew it was going to hurt our communities in this manner. But now the runway is here, and the people are there, so I would hope that perhaps there is a way the Port of Seattle could purchase those homes sooner.
And I think what the deputy mayor is saying is, the homes may not be eligible to be purchased with FAA money or even airport money, but you could use some of your general revenues from the property tax to do that. That's one way that you could think a little bit of outside the box. I want to go back to the comments that I made regarding reasonableness. There's reasonableness, and then there's legal. And we've been told that there are some mitigation measures that have been essentially written away with the way some federal laws have been passed regarding nighttime curfews, restrictions on certain types of planes, restrictions on a certain type of activities, or flight paths and the like that the planes would be using. I'm going to suggest that let's keep these things on the table, and if all of us seem to think that they are reasonable things for the port to do, the airlines to do, and for us to say that's a good middle ground, let's keep them on the table and not just throw them away, because currently, they're not something that the FAA would allow. And then, maybe we can go to DC together and lobby for those type of changes, because we all agree that they're reasonable things to do.
You all have an advantage that some of us, and I think all of us on the Commission don't have, unless you've been through this once before. Most of you have been through this once before. What, two times before, Rose?
How many?
So, other than, other than the fact that it appears that some of the recommendations, you don't feel received sufficient consideration, what else worked well the last time around, and what needed to be improved in the process of getting to those recommendations?
Can I?
Yeah, Terry, go ahead.
I'm a great believer in community involvement, and since I was born here and have lived here all my life. The more, the thing you accomplish the most is even if you get yelled at and sworn at or whatever else happens to you, at least you're out there being visible. I think the people in South King County basically feel, and I don't know about the other cities, but I can speak for my own, and I grew up in Gregory Heights and those people, is that we feel, they feel like your economy is going to support the City of Seattle, but your economy is not necessarily supporting the area in South King County, or probably in the north to some degree. My personal view is that more public involvement, people come in and yell and scream and holler at you, but once you talk to them for a while, they understand. And another thing, people move here, have moved here over the years, because the airport's here. And the jobs, a lot of the jobs that are up and down the highway are here, because the airport's here. So, it's sort of like fighting Goliath or something, to say that what we can straighten is all out. But as far as the impacts we're having on the homes that were here, and the yards, and the pastures, and all the other things, all we really have to do is to look at the city of Denver, who put their airport way out there, and now the people that have moved out there are suing them over noise and all these, and all the stuff that falls out of it, supposedly falls out of an airplane. But that doesn't matter, they did, they moved there knowing it was there. And that's, which I think is, we really don't have a right to pick on them, because they're the people who work here and live here, and go send their children to school here. And so, I'm pleased that you're doing this, and my hope is that, I think Brett's lived here almost as long as I have, and we can tell you the difference. And I think that it is reasonable, and I just love the idea of this thing, because I'm hoping this will work out better than the last time. And we can look, but get out and meet the public, get to know them, get to talk to them, and sure, some of them are going to be mad, and some of them are going to be more than mad. And I don't want the details on that, but you can, you can go to any grocery store here, especially when you've lived here as long as I have and have been involved as long as I have, and you hear all kinds of things that just wouldn't enter into our minds as city officials, or even, especially of you people who don't live here. So if we could all encourage our people to keep notes, and you would respect their rights to send them to you and to talk to them, and to try to find some way to mitigate the problems, I think that the people who live on the far ends of the runway, both north and south, especially down through Des Moines and Federal Way, really take the beating, I really do. And I, and as far as the aircraft are being concerned, they're supposed to be getting quieter, but I personally haven't noticed it a lot.
Also getting larger. They are getting quieter, but they're, in terms of the engine design, they're also getting larger. And they're carrying more people per plane, so even though, as we saw, you know, the number of actual flight operations has decreased since 2002. Planes are getting larger.
Aircraft that flies, the freight are...
Exactly.
Are not new, and do not have the same things, and it's the same way with Boeing Field, their aircraft are noisier coming out there, and that's...
Yes, they are. Thank you, Terry.
A comment to spin off on Mayor Anderson. If I can give any advice at all, I think the word transparency is used by a lot of people. If you can be above board, be honest with people, meet them at community meetings, meet them one-to-one, and don't give the impression that you're trying to do things in closed doors, because the community just absolutely does not like that. From a Tukwala perspective, and Rose mentioned this, Boeing Field is a different situation. And my... And my comments related to Sea-Tac Airport, but one way to show an example of how a community can get organized quick is to see in the newspapers that Southwest Airlines may want to fly out of Boeing Field, and the neighborhoods, they came unglued.
Yes.
But I will say that the senior officers in Southwest Airlines and King County representatives met down at Boeing Field, and we met in a couple of different venues, and they faced an irate public there, and that was good. People got to express their opinions, and they felt pretty good when they walked out of the meetings. But just don't do your work behind closed doors is the main thing.
And I would add to that, that frequent briefings at our council meetings would be nice to have at least one commissioner there when that happens, even if you're just there to say, "Hi, I'm the commissioner and I'm listening." Let the staff give the briefing. I know my electeds appreciate it when the other electeds show up. And I know that when I've gone to other council meetings, the cities around the airport to talk about something, I'm well-received, but sometimes they want to hear from the other electeds. And, and so, I can't emphasize that enough. Having access to your data as widely available as possible, on webpages, on my webpage at the city, available in hard copy form, just inundate it. That way, there's, there's, there's no accusation that you're cooking the books. Here's everything we've got, here's what we're using to do the study.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I would just add to transparency really gets down to, to a trust level. And capacity building, community capacity building, which I love to do, I think one of the number-one keys to doing that is having that opportunity to listen, to listen to people, listen to where they're at, don't come with any assumptions, but, but really to understand and have the opportunity to look at it from the community's perspective. I, I only listen to a part of what probably is a larger problem out here. I live by Boeing Field. And so, I have, not too far out of Tuckwilla, south of Seattle, by the way, Your Honor, but I clearly understand that this is a, a pretty massive issue and we need to be listening. The final thing I'd say, too, is that, that's why I love serving with these four, because I just, you know, for some of you, probably have been through the process, you're probably thinking, "Oh, my gosh, here we go again, you know, here's a new group." Like I said, this is a lot of our first time going through it. I'm excited about going through the process with my four colleagues because I do believe that we have a group of folks here who believe in capacity building, believe in trust, believe in transparency, want to build those relationships with the community, and so, I think that's us.
Well, and, and if I may, kind of piggybacking on that, well, first off, thank you all for being here and helping us do this in the best possible way for our, our community. I guess I, I just want to say that I'm no stranger to airport noise. I, I currently live in Seattle, and so I don't get impacted significantly by Sea-Tac, but I, I grew up on Air Force bases, and when you talk about a single event, kind of waking you up or giving you a roll out of bed, you know, listen to a B-52 do a touch-and-go, that's, that's a lot of noise. And so, indeed, you, all of your observations are especially valuable to us right now. We all recognize, I think, the importance of Sea-Tac, not only to the region, but to the communities immediately around it. We also recognize that big regional facilities, like an airport, have disproportionate impacts on the local areas where they're situated. And so, I see the Part 150 study as a way for us regionally to recognize the impacts locally and make sure that they're, they're honestly understood, that they are addressed and mitigated according to FAA, FAA guidelines, and perhaps also reasonable standards that would be a reflection of our community. I'm very open to that idea. But this is the beginning of the process by which we, I'd say, regionally own the impacts of the airport on the local communities. And so, I especially appreciate all of you taking the time to being here. I would ask our staff to change the work plan and actually make, you know, we have briefings with all of the city councils as opposed to, upon request. We should request those briefings, and it's a very good suggestion for us as commissioners to be out in the community as part of that. So, I, I'm just glad that we're starting off this way and look forward to working with, with all of you through the process to make sure that, you know, indeed, we do address squarely the impacts that the airport makes on the communities around it. So, thank you.
Could I?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, it was occurring to me, there were a couple of, a couple of follow-ups that I, I wanted to make sure I understood. Both Mayor Hadley and Mayor Anderson have made recommendations or requests that they have representation on the Technical Review Committee that is not just a land-use planning function. And so, what I would like to ask Diane and Stan to, to do is to actually inquire with each of the cities, each of the, each of the agencies, who by name, as opposed to by function, you want representing your city on the Technical Review Committee?
Yes.
Because sometimes the person who's holding the particular named area of responsibility may not be the person who has the best history, the best community sort of sensibility, the experience working in a community forum with public engagement that you would want to have on it. So, I, I would like, instead of saying it's only land-use planning expertise on that Technical Review Committee, make sure it's a person that you feel can represent your city's interest in and commitment to the technical review, including data. You know, I, Tony, your point about having as much access to data that can be cross-checked and verified through multiple sources, I am completely with you. And, and it's one of the biggest problems that I think we have in the, in the region. As Commissioner Albro said, there are so many jurisdictions who share their own pieces of information, but we have no way of aggregating it into a single place and, and making sure that we're, we're making decisions with the, with the accurate data. And the only other thing I, I would just love to observe is that, that Stan made a very important point in his brief presentation, and that was that of the budget for the Part 150, a full third of the budget is being allocated to making sure we get this public participation effort right. And, and public participation doesn't start and stop, you know, a third of the way into the Part 150 study. It's an intrinsic piece of the entire study. And so, let's make sure we have that budget used in the way that we are, we all expect and, and want, that it is enabling as much public participation as possible.
Just probably just as well. But it would be, I think it would be great if you five would come and have some of your commission meetings here at this airport on a regular, I mean, like every third time or fourth time or whatever, some sort of a schedule that we could attend, because coming downtown to the Port of Seattle, downtown, is not the easiest thing in the world after you've been on the job.
No, at least once a month, we're here.
Hmm?
At least one meeting a month is here in this room.
Oh, good. Thank you.
But I would also join with Mayor Anderson in encouraging you to, as commissioners, to attend the workshops and to hear the people, because I know you live elsewhere. You're not going to get the flavor of what they're enduring listening to us, even though I can go off in a passionate plea. You need to hear it from the people. And in the last Part 150, there are the flight tracks we were suggesting, by the way, that would help Federal Way.
Any other final comments?
I'd just like to throw out one thing to staff, and this is more of a question because currently we have an airport facility which we believe the upper limit of passenger count, about forty-five million, I think, and we're slightly over thirty million passengers now. And I know we're building a noise exposure map based on modeled data. I would really like to see the modeling of a maxed-out airport facility and what the noise exposure map looks like. And maybe that's naturally part of the Part 150 process, but if it's not, I think we should go ahead and add to it and begin to address some of the land use questions that I think get driven out of, what does that eventuality look at, look like? Because there's really no way that regionally we can steer away from maximizing utilization of Sea-Tac as a, as an airport facility. So, we just need to own that right up front and confront it directly.
There's one other, other issue, if I may, that comes up frequently, and that is the affluence of the air, things in the air. People will tell, ask you, "How much of this, I don't use the word terminology, are we breathing in?" And I think that's, I think that's quite a concern because some of the schools are located fairly close to the, to the flight pattern.
Is there an environment issue?
We did a health study that involved air quality testing a few years ago, and I know we're, we've talked about it a little at the Highline Forum. But I would encourage, as long as, as people are going out putting up noise monitors, putting up air quality monitors also, because I, I firmly believe that in Burian, South Normandy Park and, or North Normandy Park and South Burian, in that area, that they're flying over places they haven't flown before. So, learn what the air quality is while the flights are few, so that you can, you can look at that when the flights become many. And I had one other thought, but I'm getting older by the minute and forgetting.
We all.
At the Highline Forum, I will remember more when you're in for it.
Any other final comments? Listen, thank you all ver, oh, George, go ahead.
One other thing that's going to be new this time. Previously, we've got two runways, therefore the possibility of two simultaneous operations, which would add the noise together. Now, we have three runways plus a high-speed taxiway. So, it comes to me that it would be possible to have some of these single-event noises that would be significantly greater because there's now perhaps four or five operations going on simultaneously. And so, I'd like to see if you could maybe get, find out when some of those things occur and let us know, you know, the monitors that we have, what are the effects of having simultaneous operations on three runways plus maybe a couple on a taxiway?
What I had already forgotten. You made a very good point about land-use planning. We, we endured part of the destruction of our communities with the construction of the second runway. At that point in time, the folks were told that the airport wouldn't expand again, that this is as far as we can go. So, naturally, the local land use authorities, at the time it was King County, allowed construction further east of where it had been. So, then we come down to, "Oh, golly gee, we need the third runway." And now, all of these houses need to go. And comments were made derogatory to this community that were totally unfair. And those comments were that these people wanted to be by the airport, they moved to the airport, now they don't like the noise, and that was totally not true. They were there before the third runway decided to move. So, if we can think very far out about what future noise might be like when the airport is all built out, I agree with you, it would be a great help to our communities.
One final comment I'll make is, I was involved with that Airport Communities Coalition prior to the construction of the third runway, and what I see is we have a completely different makeup on the, the Port Commission right now. And I think you have a great opportunity for this reach-out that we're talking about. Your outreach is going to go a long ways toward facing people, satisfying their concerns, knowing full well you're not going to satisfy everybody. And all the elected officials in our council meetings, we know we can never satisfy everybody, but you gather all the facts you possibly can, and you make the best decisions you can, but don't be afraid to face the adversary.
Well, this is a commission that wants not only your input, but your partnership, so we will take you up on that, and I hope you'll see more of us in the months to come. Thank you very much. We really appreciate getting started in this fashion. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are going to recess for five minutes while we configure the tables.
Excellent.
This is Commissioner President Bill Bryant reconvening our meeting at 2:20. We're going to continue with our agenda, and we'll move back up to Item Three, which is the approval of the minutes. We have two different sets of minutes, one for the meeting of January 26th and one for the meeting of February 2nd. We're going to need two different motions because I was not here on the 26th, so I'm unable to vote on that one, and I am able to vote on the one regarding the 2nd. So, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from January 26th?
Motion to approve.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Mr. President, I have a second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign, the motion carries four to zero. I'm not voting because I wasn't here. And then, we now also have the minutes from February 2nd. Do I have a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Mr. President, I have a second. Commissioner Holland's motion?
Moved by Commissioner Holland, seconded by Commissioner Creighton, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign, the motion carries unanimously. We have no special order, and we now have the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are approved by a single motion. If any commissioner or member of the public wants to remove an item from the consent calendar, that can be done, and we will deal with it separately. We have only one item on the consent calendar today, and that will be considered without discussion unless there is a motion to remove it. How would you like to proceed?
Mr. President, I will move approval of unanimous consent calendar, Item 5A.
Been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, there's no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign, the motion carries. We'll now move into our action items, and I will turn this over to Mr. Yoshitani.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first action item is 6A. This is an authorization for the CEO to execute a new collective bargaining agreement between the Port of Seattle and the International Association of Machinists, Local 289, representing parts procurement representative, and Representative Lisa Hornfleck will be the presenter. Lisa?
Good afternoon, and that is correct. I'm Lisa Hornfleck, I'm from Labor Relations, and I'm here to request authorization for the Chief Executive Officer to execute the new collective bargaining agreement between the Port of Seattle and International Association of Machinists, Local 289, representing the parts procurement representatives. This is a relatively small group, it's eleven employees, this is a one-year contract extension.
Thank you very much. Lisa, are there any questions for Lisa or any discussion?
Mr. President, I, I want to just thank Lisa, and I really want to point out that we really appreciate the, the effort to keep costs down and for the union and, and the port to work together to manage through a continuing financially difficult situation, and hopefully 2011 will be a better year. But thanks very much, and with that, I would like to move approval, it's okay, and we move approval of Item 6A for the agreement between the Port of Seattle and the International Association of Machinists, Local 289.
It's been so moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Holland, any additional discussion?
Yeah, under other changes, I'm sorry, Mr. President, other changes, addition of language to allow for veterans fellow assignments to work groups, could you talk a little more about that?
Of course. This was a request from the manager that, right now, the only people who can work in this work group are people who have, are members of the union, and it's a unionized work group. This would allow a veterans fellow to be placed on a temporary basis, up to six months, to work in the work group without being a member of the union. And so, it would allow them to participate in that program, and that's something that we were really encouraging, and the union very graciously agreed to.
That's wonderful. Any other discussion or questions? Commissioner Albro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a, a quick question. So, this is a work group that just recently elected to be represented by the International, International Machinist Union, is that right?
That's correct.
And part of that, were they unrepresented?
That's correct.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second, any final discussion? All those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign, the motion carries. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Mr. Yoshitani. Mr. Yoshitani.
Next, Item 6B. This is an authorization for the CEO to execute a five-year lease with an option to renew for an additional five-year term with Arctic Storm Management Group LLC. Melinda Miller will be the presenter.
Good afternoon. We'll be very brief, but we wanted you to know that we're particularly pleased to bring this agreement to you because the space we were offering, about 20,000 square feet of office and warehouse at Pier 169, had the potential to be a very difficult property to lease for a number of reasons. Shoreline master use requirement of water-dependent users, plus some operational issues in an extremely depressed commercial real estate market. So when we got the notice from the tenant that had been there for 15 years, seafloor surveys that they were closing the office at the end of their term, we had a momentary panic. But I will say Pat Spangler, our, our real estate manager, immediately jumped on it, blitzed the real estate brokerage market with leasing offerings, and we were able to locate the perfect tenant, Arctic Storm Management Group, who are, who manage fishing vessels. They have two vessels, the Arctic Fjord, the Arctic Storm, actually they have another, this, yes, they have smaller vessels. But those are the two major boats, who are both currently tenants of the seaport at various moorage facilities. The, the issue of how we select, how we chose to, you know, pursue tenants, we, we did consider an RFP, a more formal RFP process, but in the, considering the, the market decided to use the brokerage community, and in retrospect, our, it was a good strategy because of Arctic Storm's lease was just expiring in their current location where they had been for 15 years. And if we had had a more extended process, we would have missed that small window of opportunity to, to get them to move. So we're very happy to have them join us. The major terms of the agreement are laid out in the commission memo. I'd be happy to go over them with you, or I can take your questions at this, at this point about any of the elements of the.
I think, given the fact that we've been briefed, we can just be asked questions unless commissioners feel otherwise. Are there any questions from Melinda? No? Otherwise, do we have a motion on how you want to proceed?
Mr. President, I'd like to move that we authorize the CEO to enter into a lease with Arctic Storm Management Group, per Item 6B on our agenda today.
It's been so moved by Commissioner Albro, is there a second?
Mr. President, I'll second the motion.
And seconded by Commissioner Tarleton, any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign, the motion carries. Melinda, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good work.
Way to go, Melinda. Next item, Mr. President, is 6C. This is an authorization for the CEO to enter into a settlement agreement with SSA Terminals LLC for certain unpaid rent for Terminal 25, 28. Ralph Graves and Mike Burke will be the presenters.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mr. Yoshitani. In May of 2009, we came to the commission with the news that our construction project at Terminal 30, to convert that site from its temporary use as a cruise terminal to containers, had encountered the problem that the cranes that had just been moved to that site, their cables, were too big to fit into the trough that had been constructed. So we're here to wrap up that whole exercise and to get your approval for one part of it. There were, the impact was, the, the solution was to replace the cables on the cranes with smaller cables. That work was accomplished by our tenant, SSA Terminals. There was also an impact in that their ability to occupy Terminal 30 and by action of the lease agreement, other terminals was delayed by a couple of months. So we had two different things we had. We had a cause of action with our designer, who under the terms of our contract was liable for this error that they had committed. And then we had to work out with our tenant how the lease payments and all would be affected. This memorandum requests your approval of the settlement with our tenant, although it also describes the settlement with the designer. And there were two parts to that. The designer agreed to pay the expenses that SSA incurred to buy the new cables for the three cranes and to install them. And then also, the designer paid us $185,000. Mike will describe our, our work with SSA, but I would just conclude my part by saying, I believe this is a fair settlement. I think we got great cooperation, both from our designer, Berger ABAM, and from SSA. We have other contracts with Berger ABAM, they've done great work for us in the past. With the exception of this one problem, their design for this project at T-30 was excellent and had a very low rate of errors and omissions. And so we plan to continue doing business with them in the future. Mike?
Thank you, Ralph. And just real quickly, basically at Terminal 2530, the expansion area of Terminal 30, per the lease agreement was, SSA was not obligated directly to take the terminal until the project was complete. However, the existing Terminal 25, 28 area, which SSA had been using as a terminal for Matson operations, there was no provision in that lease to cover this fairly extraordinary situation. Now SSA, as Ralph pointed out, per understanding of the commitment from us of when we would be completing our project, had relocated Matson back over to Terminal 18 and moved their cranes over to Terminal 30, the same cranes where the cable couldn't fit in. And then the, the error was discovered, it was not feasible to move Matson back, it was costly to do that, and so they were impacted in their ability to use Terminal 25 and 28 as well, and hence why we're proposing this settlement agreement, relieving them of most of the rent for that facility for those two months. They are paying us approximately $25,000, basically for the use of the berth for the Matson vessel that was there for two months. That's because they got $10,000 a month from Matson directly to SSA for that vessel. And then they had a minor use of an office on-site in the building, one of the Matson offices there. So we propose, accept of that settlement, and I would reemphasize what Ralph said, SSA expedited this project, cooperating with us fully in taking the lead to solve the problem and working with us on this.
Great. Thank you very much, Ralph and Mike. Are there any questions, comments, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I well remember this because we are on a schedule deadline that was brutal. You were trying to finish Terminal 91 for the new cruise ship season at the same time that we ran into this cable, cable disconnect. And I remember when we were trying to determine whether to rebuild a whole new trench or to try to find a smaller diameter cable. And Ralph, you, I think we were meeting in the Lower Duomo Sha, the Long House, as a matter of fact. And Ralph, I remember you're telling me that the, the access to the less diameter cable was really the schedule determinant for us. Could we get it fast enough? Because it was, there was only one supplier, and it was from overseas, and, and we, we knew basically that we were not going to get it in time to meet the June 1st requirement. And at that time, I think we authorized an additional, it was $330,000 or something, a port expense to, to do the design work and the, or the redesign work for the, for the cable redesign. And so I am going to support this for resolution of what was an extremely difficult and last-minute adjustment to a schedule. I was going to ask Mr. Yoshitani to propose that we actually have the audit committee in 2010 or 11, whichever the schedule permits, Commissioner Albro and I on that, on that audit committee, to look at how we, we reconciled to get to this, to this agreement for a total of $210,000 coming back to the port. So look at what we put into it in May, and in terms of dealing with the, with the delay and, and all of that, and then what is coming back to us with this agreement. Because I want to make sure it's documented in, in audit, that the port staff pursued the resolution and tried to reach what is a fair settlement with the, with SSA, a crucial tenant, obviously, and also with a well-known, established and reliable contractor.
And that's, that's fine, Commissioner Tarleton. What I would suggest is that I'll, I'll ask Joyce and her staff to actually go through the calculations themselves.
Great.
So that you have an independent assessment.
Excellent. Thank you.
No problem.
Other comments?
I just had a question for you, I guess, Ralph, and that is, the Berger ABAM payment to us, I just don't understand the context, or where that amount came from, how it was arrived at. So maybe you could, if possible, elaborate on that a little bit?
Well, of course, this is some of what we discussed in, in executive session, and there's a balancing of the different aspects of our lease. And there is the rent that we missed because of the two months delay, but then there is the present value of the extension out at the far end. It can be interpreted in different ways. Frankly, this settlement is the result of a negotiation consideration taken in terms of our estimation of what we might recover should it go to trial, less the costs it would take us to get there. And so that's really briefly how we arrived at that figure.
Thank you.
Other comments? How do you want to proceed?
Mr. President, I will move approval of Item 6C to authorize the Chief Executive to reach a settlement agreement with SSA Terminals and associated with the cable.
It's been so moved by Commissioner Tarleton, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holland. All those in favor, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign, the motion carries. Ralph, Mike, thank you very much.
Next item, Mr. President, 6D. This is an authorization for the CEO to advertise for a consultant for the eighth-floor weatherproofing project at the airport, to execute a contract for design services in the amount of $600,000, and to perform contract administration. And the total cost of this project will be $13 million, $50,000. Presenter will be George England and Diane Santiago.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mr. Yoshitani. I'll first let Diane provide some opening remarks from the operations group and owner, and then I'll speak to the technical.
Good afternoon. Thank you for giving George and I the opportunity to provide you with some information about the eighth floor of a parking garage and the need to begin the waterproofing membrane project. The eighth floor resides on the top deck of the garage and has 1,848 spaces. 1,263 of those spaces are for public parking and 585 are reserved for employees. The parking garage is the largest non-airline revenue source at the airport. Our average revenue per stall per month is $503. It's estimated that about 438,000 customers and employees park on the eighth floor per year. These vehicles create a significant wear on the membrane. Coupled with the wear, rain and water leak, create, excuse me, rain and water create serious customer service problems in the garage. Specifically, water leaking from cracks in the eighth floor carry lime through the concrete and drip on vehicles parked below on the seventh and sixth floors. And I've even noticed that on some really heavy days, it leaks all the way down to the fifth floor. In an attempt to avoid damaging vehicles owned by our valued customers, we have closed 182 parking spaces on both floors. And we'll likely need to close more as time goes on. We have attempted small maintenance fixes, and those have not been successful. As of today, we have paid out about $1,600 in claims to fix vehicles damaged by lime deposits. While this is not a monumental amount, I assess that there are many customers that have failed to report damage and perhaps chosen not to park at C-TAC in the future. Furthermore, the membrane is peeling on the top surface, which can be significant, which can be a significant trip hazard for customers and employees. The revenue generated from our public parking garage is critical to the overall success of the airport. To provide excellent customer service to those parking with us, we highly recommend that the eighth-floor membrane be updated or waterproofed. I'll let George England now discuss the project details and costs. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. This request is to authorize the procurement and to complete the design of the replacement of the failing roof-like membrane on the eighth floor, which, as Diane has noted, is significant. The area is also quite large, it's 13.6 acres, or approximately 600,000 square feet. And this membrane currently ranges anywhere from 10 to 20 years old. The scope also includes replacement of all of the expansion joints, as well, some of those are nearly 40 years old. The sealing of cracks in the concrete deck as we put on the new membrane, as well as some repairs of leaks in the eighth-floor elevator lobbies and around the elevator shafts. So the existing roof membrane, I've kind of provided some, some photos here and just speak to it briefly. As the water leaks, rainwater leaks underneath the membrane and it runs through the concrete, as Diane says, it picks up lime, which is one of the products within concrete, and it creates a pretty acidic liquid. And when that falls onto the vehicles, it really has an impact on their finish. Now, the other long-term effect of rain or water running through the concrete is the impact it has onto the overall structural stability, if you will, of the garage, which it's far cheaper now to perform work like this than to allow that water to continue through cracks and damage the facility, and then at some point, we have to do some significant major structural repairs. The schedule is to complete the design work this year and then come back to the commission, authorize for construction. We are hoping, outside chance, we can do this all in one season. However, it's more likely, because there's weather sensitivity to replacing the membrane, that we may have to do it over two construction seasons. So with that, I'll be answered, glad to answer any questions you may have.
Great. George, Diane, thank you very much. And just to remind the commission, this is a, an item that we reviewed and approved in the budget when we passed it before, so. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Diane and George, I just wanted to note that the memo did not include the sales tax that will be generated for this project. And given that it's a 13 million multi-year project, I think the sales taxes will be substantial, and I want to make sure that we continue to track this. Tom Barnard is going to be helping us track how, how much we are generating for local economy here.
Yeah, Commissioner, that's a good point. I do want to point out that though, this request is for design services, and we typically do not have sales tax. Now, in terms of the overall construction project, we'll refine that and bring that in.
Yeah, as, as you're doing that, I, I didn't realize we didn't get them for design services because that's, it's done in-house.
That's correct.
Right? So in the, and we don't charge sales tax on it, but, but in the total project budget authorization summary, where we have the 13 million, if you could start carrying that number as well, just so that we'd have some visibility. And, and the only other thing I'd, I'd like to really emphasize, I love the idea of using the parking garage, to the extent possible, to encourage commuting, both for the special events at Quest and Safeco via light rail, or for the commuter trip reduction plan that we're hoping the state legislature supports for us, so that we can group together with other employers in, at the airport. And anything that ensures that we are creating public space to accommodate more use of light rail or mass transit is great.
I would, Commissioner, Mr. President, I would agree with that. I think that's a good, also, and maybe I'm just not, I could have overlooked it, but addition to the sales tax, just the number of jobs or people who we're employing on, on our projects, is, is, am I overlooking that?
No, it's not there.
Okay.
Let me.
That'd be another good one, too.
You, you've been pretty consistent in providing the jobs and the sales taxes for each project.
Yes.
But we don't have it on the memo this time.
Okay. How would you like to proceed?
Actually, I'd like to ask a question.
Commissioner Albro?
Mr. President? Mr. President? George, first off, I want to concur with, with your point that it's just far, far cheaper to maintain what you have than it is to rebuild it. My, my question really is going to the overall cost of the project, not just the design piece of 13 million. And what I, having not participated in the prior budget process, I was looking for that metric by which I could do some math for weatherproofing, and so you mentioned 600,000 square feet. So, you know, my quick math is this is about 20 bucks a square foot for weatherproofing, and which I, I know we're spending money on a lot of other things. We must be, because that's a lot of money to spend on putting on a weather, weatherproof surface on concrete. So it would be helpful for me, before seeing future authorization requests on this, to have a better understanding of the other elements of the project and how we get to 12-plus million dollars of, for, I guess, construction costs and sales tax, that kind of thing, because there are obviously a lot of things happening as part of this project.
Yeah, I think it, it's pretty significant effort, one, to remove the existing membrane, which is also built into this cost. But we can provide the, the detail behind the major components for you. Commissioner?
Commissioner? No? Okay. How would you like to proceed?
I'll move that we approve the request for $600,000 to allow the engagement of a design firm to deal with eight-four weatherproofing of Seattle Tacoma International Airport Parking Facility for item 6D on our agenda.
It's been so moved by Commissioner Albro. Is there a second?
I will second Commissioner Albro's motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Creighton. Any additional questions for Diane or George? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign the motion carries. George, Diane, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. President, next item is 6E. This is, we request the commission ratification of a developer extension agreement between the Port of Seattle and High Line Water District to request authorization for the CEO to execute a bill of sale per the requirements of the developer extension agreement and request authorization for an increase of the project authorized amount by $300,000 to pay anticipated in-house and consultant cost to complete the consolidated aviation warehouse project at Sea-Tac International Airport for a total authorization of $9.3 million. And this authorization is not within the current revised budget.
So Commissioners, good afternoon again. As you remember, at the last meeting, I gave you a preview of this topic. We're about finished with this warehouse, going to occupy it next month. But there's some things going on that we need your help on, specifically three things. We're asking you to ratify an agreement that was signed beyond his authority by the previous project manager. We're asking you to authorize the CEO to sign a follow-up agreement that is also related to the water supply from the utility district to this facility. And then we're asking for more money. The more money we need, because we anticipate a request for additional money from our designer, who was directed in a somewhat informal fashion to do some work beyond their scope, and we have to settle, but we anticipate there will be merit to their claim. Furthermore, we have in-house costs due to the extended duration of this project, and we don't have the details of how all that breaks down, because we haven't done our negotiation with the designer. But we are safe-siding that and asking for an additional $300,000, which we will believe will carry us through the, the completion of the project. And I'll let Wayne go into a bit more detail.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Commissioners. Mr. O'Shanty. So I guess I'd preface it by saying all of these items were ones where we made mistakes. Sale of the water main is required by the water district in order to get water service to the site. As Ralph stated, our project manager signed an agreement, didn't have authority to do so, so now we're seeking the authority to do that. And as for the budget increase, there's really several causes. As Ralph stated, there's a prospective request for fee adjustment from our design consultant, a small business. And that request really comes primarily from scope changes due to changed site conditions. We actually moved the site, so geotechnical work and stormwater work were primarily that. And again, we, the, the project manager informally approved that work, but we did not go through the formal steps. Second, project cost escalated during this project due to technology changes. That was primarily around wireless communications. The site move made wireless communications that much more important, because we're that much farther away from the airport. And also facility security systems, which weren't really clearly identified during initial scoping of the project. And finally, as Ralph stated, resolution of these issues and a resolution of agreement with the water district, agreement with the sewer district, and, and this pending request for fee adjustment from a design consultant means more staff time during that time, which means more soft costs. We became aware of the confluence of these issues in, in January. We did not catch it when we should have, which was the last time we were updating our cost projections in December. So we missed that. And I guess the best thing I could say about that is, given the extensive staff and management changes that were happening in this group between December and January, if there was any time where something was going to drop, that would be the time, and that's what happened here. I don't have any better reason for that. With that, I urge your approval of this item, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Wayne and Ralph, and thank you for giving us the heads up as soon as you found out about it and for being so forthcoming about this. We appreciate that. Are there any other questions or discussion on this item? How do you want to proceed? Commissioner?
Mr. President, I, I'd just like to, I'd like to echo your comment. I, I want to thank Ralph and Wayne. I particularly want to thank you for saying it in public, that we made mistakes, not that mistakes were made. There is a very important difference. And, and the second thing I'd like to thank you for is, is defining where in the process the mistakes happened, because it is a lessons learned kind of opportunity, where we can, we can help future project managers understand when they reach those kinds of points of scope creep, you know, sort of informally saying, yeah, it seems okay, but don't let the contractor get out of hand and, and keep on top of it. All of those are the way we learned how to not do it the next time. And, and so I appreciate your saying it in public, because I'm sure there will be some project managers who will say, oh, I'm facing that exact situation right now. Let me ask somebody a question. So the only real question I had is, since the authorization is not within the current revised budget, where will these funds come from? The memo said the authorization would not be within the current revised budget.
It is coming elsewhere from the Airport Development Fund.
Okay.
So, so they're moving, they're moving money around to cover this, so it is still coming from within the airport funds.
Okay, very good. Mr. President, I will move approval of item 6E to ratify the developer extension agreement between the port and the High Line Water District and request authorization for the CEO to execute a bill of sale per requirements of the extension agreement and authorize increase of project authorized amount by $300,000.
It's been so moved by Commissioner Talton. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holland. Any additional discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign the motion carries. Ralph, Wayne, thank you.
Thank you.
We now have some business which we have to do twice a year, and so I'm going to recess this meeting into a special meeting of the Board of Directors of the Industrial Development Corporation, the IDC of the Port of Seattle. And the first order of business is to approve minutes from the previous meetings, July 28th in particular. We had a meeting on March 5th of last year, but because only two commissioners who are currently serving on the commission were there, we're not going to approve those. And the three of us who were there on July 28th can approve the minutes from that meeting. And so the first item of business is the approval of the minutes from the July 28th IDC meeting. And I'd entertain a motion to do that. From one of you two.
Oh.
Mr. President, I'll move approval of the minutes for the July 28, 2009 Industrial Development Corporation meeting.
Moved by Commissioner Talton and seconded by?
The other one will second. I will second Commissioner Talton's motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All three of us are going to say aye, I hope. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go. And that's passed. The second order of business is to approve the Industrial Development Corporation's Board of Directors and Officers for 2009.
Ten.
It says nine. Is it nine or 10? Must be 10.
The memo says 10.
Yeah, it's just wrong here. The IDC Board of Directors is the same as the officers of the Port of Seattle Commission, so I'd entertain a motion to approve the commission as the Board of Directors in 2010.
Mr. President, so moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign the motion carries.
You might want to tell the Commissioners what they're doing.
Particularly the new director.
That's what I mean.
Well, I'm going to get, I am going to get, I'm going to get to that in just a moment.
Oh, good.
And finally, the last item of business is the IDC's annual report for the year ending December 31st, 2009. And my understanding is Elizabeth Northson and Diane Campbell are going to be making that presentation. And why don't I turn this over to you, and then I will kind of talk a little about what we've just done and how we might want to do this differently in the future, but go ahead.
All right. Good afternoon. This is the Port's annual IDC meeting. You've already covered the first two items. Just by way of background, the IDC, or Industrial Development Corporation, is a special purpose municipal corporation that was formed by the Port in 1982. Its primary purpose is to provide access to tax-exempt financing for companies that have eligible projects. And the key word there is access. The IDC does not itself lend money or incur indebtedness on behalf of these companies. Any debt issued through the IDC is the obligation of the company and not the IDC or the Port. We do charge a small fee to these companies for use of the IDC, and it's that fee that, along with interest earnings, that comprise the basis of the financial statements that Diane Campbell will review. So I will turn it over to Diane to walk through the financial statements.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. IDC Director, Commissioner O'Shanty. In terms of the IDC assets, at the end of 2009, the assets had about $325,000, essentially the same level as the year prior. In terms of income, income for the year was $9,300, coming from two sources, investment income and customer fees. Investment income was the majority of that, $9,100, which is IDC's allocated earnings from the Port's investment pool, where all of the IDC's assets are placed. And then there's customer fees of about $174, and it's paid by the bond issuers. And that customer fee is based on the amount of debt service that those customers pay during the year. And if you look at the statements, it's lower than the prior two years, because we've been in a substantially declining interest rate environment. And for 2010, we expect the customer fees to be about the same, about the $200 level. For expenses, in 2009, the expenses were the $10,840, and that came from two places. There's an administrative expense of $840, and this is for essentially staff time for maintaining the IDC books and its records. The bulk of the expenses, the scholarship expense of $10,000, which is IDC's contribution to the Ninth Annual Economic and Trade Fellowship Program, which the board approved in July of last year. And there were no audit expenses in 2009. The 2007 audit expense that you see was incurred for the Washington State Auditor, and that audit occurs approximately every three years. In terms of the IDC bond status, there were currently just three companies, no change from the previous year, and the outstanding IDC bond totaled $81 million. The shortest maturity is due in 2021, that's Crowley, and the longest bonds will mature in 2030, and that's Northwest. And that essentially concludes the financial report details for IDC for last fiscal year.
Thank you. And Diane, if I remember, it's at this winter-spring meeting that we give you some initial guidance on the fellowship program, and then we approve it in July. Can you review that for the new Commissioners, and then also talk to us about what kind of sum you're looking for this year?
We're looking for tentative approval, and it's really essentially based on the asset level, based on the current asset level. We try to pay out the amount that we project to be the, the investment income. So each of the awards are about $5,000. So at the current asset level, we could award one to three, up to three. This is where we need your guidance. It could be one, two, or three. It really depends on the number of applicants that we get and the quality of the applicants that we get. If you wanted a little bit of a background, since its inception 10 years ago, in some years, we've awarded just one fellowship, and that was because of the asset level at that time, $5,000. It's grown over the years. We've awarded one, two, the highest amount that we've awarded has been three, when we had a nice quality group of applicants. And so it could be between one and three. So it depends on your guidance level.
And then what do, what do the fellows do?
They do a number of things. I have a, I don't know if I can hand something out, a summary here of the history. Some have used it towards undergraduate studies. One thing I should say, the use of the awards, it could be study drawn from the following disciplines or related fields. It could be community development, economics, international studies, international business, international trade and development, planning urban studies, public policy, transportation. So the recipients have used it over a number of different things. I may not have the specifics, but some have used it towards undergraduate degrees, graduate degrees, some specific certification programs, and so on.
And Mr. President, and Diane, are these Port employees, Port contractors for the new Commissioners?
Again, these are Port employees, and I have a summary here that I can give you that will outline the fellowship, the eligibility criteria. They're essentially Port employees. They would be tried to have been here for, for example, for three years. There's an application and interview process that they have to go through, and essentially, the, the course of study that they can go to is to support the basic core economic development core vision of the Port.
Diane and Elizabeth, given the asset value right now, what's your recommendation and what would be a reasonable level to spend?
As I mentioned, it could be one to three. I would say we could look at funding two fellowships as we have in the last two years. If, but I would like to leave that open. If we do find three qualified candidates, we could go to that level, but at this point, I would say two. And we will come back to you in the summer for final approval.
And we don't need a motion today. We just need to give general guidance.
General guidance.
Does anybody have any thoughts?
I have, just, how do people hear about it? Is it just through the ports?
Again, it's a summary point. There is a number of places, through the learning calendar, through emails, through the Compass Port Intranet, and by word of mouth. We have, there's an IDC fellowship committee that works through this process. We're in the, we're crafting the marketing program right now, and hope to start putting out information through all of those channels come the end of March slash April.
Okay. Commissioner Albro?
Yeah, I, I really appreciate your, your briefing and the information. I guess, this being the first, my first opportunity to, to deal with this, I have to say I'm a little skeptical as to whether or not the fellowships achieve the objective of economic development or instead are doing something else that's very important, and that is providing a resource to highly motivated, capable employees of the Port and helping them to contribute more to the institution over time. The question I really have is the, the amount of resource that we have in the IDC, which it's up to us whether we want to leave it there or not, and whether we're getting the biggest bang for, for the buck. I've been spending some time in our balance sheet, kind of learning our, our financial situation, and we have a lot of little pockets of money that are kind of, you know, funds dedicated to one thing or another. And I think sometimes, over time, what happens, and I, I'm not sure it's happened here, but it certainly happens in many other organizations, is that we kind of spread ourselves very thin and consequently don't really put enough resource to some very specific targeted objectives. So just asking for some early guidance or, I guess, viewpoints. I'm, I'm, I'm open to the idea that this really is about economic development, but I guess I'd like to see that proven with some case in point. And the resource is to whether or not we really need to have $300,000 or $50,000 sitting around earning a little interest, so you don't have to come and ask for us to fund a fellowship.
Commissioner Tom?
I appreciate Commissioner Albro's perspective, because it is true that as organizations grow and as initiatives, workforce development initiatives, training, career opportunities dispersed throughout the organization, it's easy to lose track of the total amount of money that is being spent on that very important objective of preparing employees to take on higher-level assignments, be ready for higher-level assignments, be ready for career growth and development. And something occurred to me as Commissioner Albro was making his comments, I'm looking at the names of the previous recipients of the grants, and one of the ways of measuring whether it really is contributing to economic development of the port is to see whether or not prior recipients are still with the port and whether their careers have taken paths that are putting them directly in a path to contribute to the economic mission of the Port of Seattle. So that's one metric you could use. Another metric to use is to look at, Mr. Yashitani, the total pool of money that we give to these fellowships compared to the Veterans Fellows and the Urban Fellows Program, and maybe some other leadership development monies that you have. I don't know how the evaluation of leadership development, career development is all grouped together right now at the port, but Human Resources could look at this and say, we're spending on, you know, we have a $400, $500 million annual operating budget, what is the percentage of the operating budget we should be spending cumulatively on these kinds of initiatives? And are we getting the impact that we want those monies to have? And I don't know if we've ever looked at it that way, but I would be willing to look at that with the team, just because it's important to invest in our people, and it's important to invest in the ability of the institution to be grooming people to run it. And how we spend the money is, you know, there are many different options. But there are some terrific people who have been the recipients of this fellowship who are making real contributions to the economic mission of the port right now.
Commissioner Creighton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to concur with my colleagues, Commissioner Albro, Commissioner Charlton, in their comments, and I'm just curious, the memo lists the other local jurisdictions that participate or that have established IDCs, and I'm just curious, what have they done similar programs with their funds, or what have they done with these funds that we allocate towards the fellowships? And then what, under the law, can be done or is allowed to be done?
I'll answer the second question first because I actually know the answer to that question and not to the first one. The statute under which the IDC is authorized does restrict how IDC funds can be used, and it is restricted to economic development purposes. And that's why the fellowship has been limited in terms of being awarded for education that promotes some kind of economic development as opposed to anything broader for staff development. And so that is part of what goes into the analysis of how to award the fellowship. I frankly don't know what other IDCs do. Many of them are not particularly active, so they may not have assets. We do, because we had a number of bond issues particularly back in the 1980s, we built up a certain amount of assets, and that became a form of endowment to generate revenues for this fellowship. Prior to the establishment of the fellowship, the assets simply accumulated in the IDC, and because the ability to pull them out is limited and tied specifically to economic development, this was a way of being able to tap into those assets.
Thanks, Elizabeth. And I would also agree that, I mean, I think this program has been valuable. It has provided educational advancement opportunities to some of our top-performing staff that have gone on, you know, to other roles at the Port of Seattle. So I think it has been valuable. I'm just, you know, curious, you know, especially in economic situations like we're in right now and budgetary situations, I think it's always good to continue to look at programs and continue to reevaluate.
Commissioner Albro and then Holland.
I guess, first off, I do recognize the value of fellowships generally. I just really want to make sure that everyone hears that. I'm seeing this question really about what are we doing in terms of economic development, particularly industrial development? And I'd like to pose a question back to you to grapple with between now and the next time we have a chance to talk, and that is, you know, assume that the slate is wiped clean, and you're willing to spend $15,000 a year, what other things could you do that would generate equal to or better results? And I'll just throw out an idea, having a internal competition, if you will, for programs or development scenarios or business plans that might actually grow our business or find a use for industrial property that we are struggling with in terms of how to actually do that, and, you know, reward the winning entries with money instead. And by doing something like that, actually create and reinforce an entrepreneurial spirit within our organization that we are about economic development. So I just throw that out as something I think that would, if this really is about economic development and we're willing to spend $15,000, maybe there's a way we can get more for it.
We can certainly look into what options there may be. There are legal restrictions on what we can do with IDC funds, but we can research what those restrictions would entail with respect to that idea of whether we could find another way to use that $15,000, and we can get back to the board with our thoughts.
Yeah, I really appreciate Commissioner Albro, what he said there. I hadn't even thought about that. That's a pretty creative way of doing it. I don't know what our CEO would, I'd like to hear his thoughts at some point about that, too. And I don't know if you're prepared now, but maybe at some point. But let me just say that I do think the current set of principles here is helping people with, and identifying people with their, you know, either their education or their, you know, more training. I think that's wonderful, and I'm curious to know if there's other initiatives like that in the organization outside of this corporation. So to step back, all of this is really new to me right now, and so I don't even know how I would vote for this, if I'm supposed to even be voting for this at the point, I'm not sure, because I still feel like I have a lot of questions, the way that you're setting it up currently, like who's on the committee, who makes the decisions for the people who get the scholarships, what's the timeframe, do they interview with people, do they, you know, so I have a lot of questions at this point, so I don't even know if I'm even prepared to...
We're not voting today.
Okay.
All we need to do is to say, and I think what I'm hearing is, the staff recommendation is that we authorize them to consider two or three fellowships, and no more than three, and maybe two unless there are stellar candidates that we want to consider, and that it comes before us in July for a vote.
Okay.
But we need to give them just general guidance on whether we want to spend five, 10, or 15.
And I guess what I'm saying, even with that, I don't, I feel inadequate personally.
We don't have to vote today.
Okay.
It'll be in July.
No, just, okay.
So...
In between now and then, you can ask.
Any thoughts?
Yeah.
Briefings.
Okay.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Bryant, I actually had just a technical question on the status of the IDC bonds, Elizabeth. I noted that Northwest Airlines has $64.3 million outstanding as of the end of December. Do you know if that was part of the Delta-Northwest merger, and are those bonds being redefined under Delta?
That was used to construct the Northwest hangar here at the airport.
Okay.
And the responsibility for paying the debt will be part of the merger, and whatever entity comes out of that merger will be the entity responsible for this debt.
Okay, so is there any requirement to reassign the debt to the new entity if they do have a new entity?
That would be handled by Northwest, so the IDC doesn't need to be involved.
Okay, all right. That's what I mostly wanted to verify.
It's between Northwest and the bondholders.
Okay, very good.
Generally, what I think in terms of direction is that you should plan on looking at maybe two, unless you have stellar candidates, but I also think that you're hearing from the commission that we want to look at this more carefully on how it's done, perhaps more than we ever have before. I'd also appreciate, you know, Craig, your thoughts on whether or not we do this in a way that it has to be done. I think it's somewhat awkward that we have to suspend our regular meeting, elect a totally different board, have different minutes, all to give away $10,000. So if there's, if this is the way it has to be done, so be it, but if there are other ways that we could do this, it might be a little bit more efficient. Does anybody disagree with any of that?
Nope.
Okay, great, then you have that general direction.
For example, I would like to look at whether this is a board that the CEO could sit on, so that, under the delegation of authority, he has the authority to exercise the decision on fellowships and things like that in the same way that he does on a day-to-day basis.
It just takes an awful lot of time to give away $10,000.
Mr. Commissioner, and that was just sort of kind of what I was ultimately getting at, because it seems to me that, you know, we clearly, the five of us, don't run the seaport and airport on a day-to-day basis, and the persons who are closer to their employees is obviously the CEO. So again, I feel completely inadequate.
All right.
If I may just, you know, obviously, the genesis of this was well before I got here, and I'm not sure where the momentum is, and I agree with you that $10,000 and spending this kind of time, it just doesn't seem like good use of your time as well as ours. But I would add that, in particular, particularly to Commissioner Albro's point, that we have a pretty extensive program where we're encouraging our employees to improve themselves, and we have a tuition reimbursement program, which I won't get into the details of, but it's certainly more than $10,000, which has no visibility at your level, but there's a policy that's been set, and we follow that, and we encourage it because it's the right thing to do. We want our people to improve their, you know, their skill level and so forth. So what I would say is that at some point in the very near future, I'd like to have, if you would like, I'll have my people give you a brief briefing on the policy and what's been done over the last couple of years, if you're interested in doing that.
Okay, great. All right, with that, I'm going to adjourn the special annual meeting of the IDC and reconvene the regular meeting of the Port Commission. And we have a few quick items left. We have a staff briefing, briefing on the rental car facility, and then we have a pre-brief on some other airport items and some new business to consider. So, Mr. Yashitani.
Yeah, we have three people in the public on that.
Well, the first staff briefing is, of course, the update on the rental car facility and George England, and, go ahead.
Okay, good afternoon. All right, so we'll make this brief because we'll get into the end. The rental car facility, I'll take the next slide. So we are 38% complete with construction, and we're averaging about 220 workers a day with 240 when we have multiple concrete placements. We're up to the fifth floor now, we're placing concrete decks, and we just keep our fingers crossed for good weather. So we have had some rainy days in January where we have lost some time, but we're looking forward to what I hear should be some little rain, but then some drier days and some warmer days to make up some of that time. What I've done, too, if you look at the briefing materials, is, I'm showing the slide on the cost, but we've also added some additional information in the briefing attachment that shows some project status summary that you might find of interest. We talk a bit about our safety record, the number of workers that, new jobs for the project, and 175 miles of post-extension cable that we've installed to date. So we'll continue to just leave some interesting factoids there for you. Anyway, on the cost side, we are showing about $23 million worth of committed dollars that are pending, or actually not pending, but are there available as we run into issues on the base contract side. And then on the construction contingency, we have about $3 million worth of contingency remaining after our pending's been settled. So our suspension-related changes are almost done. We are complete with our audit, and we're in the middle of negotiating with the few remaining subcontractor on disputes and with our general contractor on their costs. So that's it on the construction side.
Great, thank you, Janice.
All right, moving on to design briefly, a couple of updates. We are finalizing the construction documents for the outside roadway improvements. We have had a bit of a snag with the agency, Washdod, and the city asking us to remove a signal from the design, which is rather interesting. And also, the most concerning is we are in the process of updating and finalizing the bus maintenance facility. We have a significant number of revisions required to the specifications to meet some procurement requirements, and the concern there is, may impact the overall schedule of the BMF. I cannot give you much more than that at this point, other than to say the team is working aggressively at refining the schedule based on this current impact. And we're also looking at other opportunities, schedule-wise, so that we can bring the opening of the rental car facility closer to the opening or the completion of the actual rental car facility. And we're looking at either accelerating the construction, we're looking at business opportunities, and perhaps utilizing some existing facilities to be able to operate the buses, even though the bus maintenance facility may not be 100% complete. So anyways, that's a significant effort and issue for us, that we want to try and close this gap that's always existed, really, since we restarted the program. Just touch on, we have resolved some claims, after-the-fact design claims with the Walker team, and we're preparing a couple of amendments and processing those at this time. The purchase documents for the RFP for buses will go out on the street, I believe, this week. We're wrapping that up, so we're on schedule with that. And then, just going to the budget, everything seems to be tracking in coordination. There's not really much of an update here. We're still showing the available unallocated contingency, which is really the residual from the bus purchase. And then, just show you an update quickly on how we're tracking for the customer facility charge collections against projections. So we dropped a little bit again this month, but we seem to still be tracking okay.
Commissioner.
Thank you. George, actually, that's what the pattern is that I'm looking at, and I'm a little bit concerned, only because we are looking at every month, there is an increasing delta compared to our forecast versus actuals. And if you look at the CFC actuals for January 2010, they're actually 2.4 million below what our forecast was for February 10, okay? So each month that our forecast, our actuals aren't meeting forecast, we're losing ground, and I don't see that we're making up the ground to catch up. So it's not, you're right, basically, that we're mostly on track, it's a million delta, but it's a pattern of six months in a row of being behind our forecast. And it's kind of hard to make up that forecasted versus actual difference over time. So maybe, I don't know, if the forecast needs to be revisited, since the last time you did that forecast was August, and that was six months ago, right?
That's correct. And I do understand that landside operations and perhaps the business group is working to improve the modeling for the forecast relative to collections.
Good, all right.
We're just still doing this sort of the way we started this.
Right.
But I know that work's going on, and I know they weren't ready to sort of roll that new...
That's fine.
...reporting tool out.
So you are, you are looking at a revised way of doing the forecasting, perhaps on more of a recurring basis, like every three months or something?
That's my understanding from the business side of, not me personally, but...
Yeah, that, well, I realize this is a, you know, this is an effort that cuts across the whole port. But I will be tracking that, because I, the further away we get from actuals to forecast, the more worried I get that we won't be able to make up that 106 million by the end of December.
All right, and I'll make it a point for the next month's update to give you more specifics.
Thanks.
Well, it just appears that we got more bullish over the summer, and that's not bearing out.
Yeah, exactly.
George, does this include the bus rental facility, maintenance facility?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, see, there's a piece in there that, you know, we consciously made a decision to delay the... to delay the design of the bus maintenance facility. It was, you know, it was a reasonable decision because the entire project had been put on hold.
Exactly.
And as a result, we were sort of behind the eight ball in the construction of it. And that's why we're kind of finding ourselves in a little bit of a dilemma. I don't see a major problem in it, quite frankly, but I think part of that is reflected in here.
I agree.
Okay, let's watch it. Anything else? Commissioner?
I will say, Mr. President, my seat made here, I guess, to speak to Cal Dalton, Commissioner Dalton. We, again, the jobs that are being created, 14, is it 1,400 so far? And I think the mayor's here earlier, I think this would have been another good thing to highlight to them because, you know, they were, I think they mentioned that we were real focused on Seattle. You know, this facility's being built here in Sea-Tac and I imagine a lot of the workers live in and around South King County. So this is really what I would consider a massive stimulus package to this part of the county. So we'll have to let them know when we go out and do our meetings with them.
Great. Well, George, Janice, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Janice, I apologize. I went blank on your name, too, but I know who you are.
Commissioner Dalton, electronic age, the sales tax on the previous, for item 6D, is about $894,000 and the number of jobs estimated for construction would be around 100.
Excellent.
Good.
Very nice.
Commissioner, I'll still get you the detail.
Jeez, I have to wait. Okay, Commissioners, the next item is, this is a pre-briefing of the upcoming airport items and revolves around the elevator replacement and renewal request. Dave Sochi will be providing the update.
Hi, Commissioners. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. We've got about 18 projects coming forward from aviation over the next month to two months. And I thought I'd cover the escalator project, as Tay noted, and just a couple others. The escalator project is a big one. It's the biggest one coming forward in the next couple of months. It's about a $55 million estimated cost. We will be replacing 42 escalators. And we've made some good progress, thanks to the CDD CPO team. They were down at the Washington State Legislature on January 28th and were before the Capital Projects Review Board and made a presentation to do a design-build methodology on this project. And they got rave reviews, said it was the best presentation that board had ever seen. It passed and now the team is moving forward fast. They will be here in early April or the second meeting in April and they'll be requesting permission to advertise at that time. You had earlier provided authorization for design and the design is proceeding and the estimate of $55 million was an early estimate in the project before design moved forward. And so they'll be refining that estimate and then coming forward. So you'll probably see two actions, one to advertise and once that gets out on the street, then they'll have time and be far enough along to get a better estimate. But we think it'll be in the $55 million range. The, if I may, Tay, go on to a couple other large ones? Thank you. The, another second project that you've been briefed on recently was the Delta project at the South Satellite. The team will be coming forward to get about a $4 to $5 million authorization for tenant reimbursement for Delta to build their club lounge on top of the South Satellite. And again, that's good news that they're willing to invest here and bring us more business. Third project that's coming forward is another good news one, in my view, and that it is the, it's a baggage connection down below that enables more bags to be sent directly out to the North Satellite. And that supports Alaska's planned expansion out on the North Satellite where they'd like to do most of their hubbing and more of their activities. It'll allow them to be more efficient. And this baggage connection was estimated, I think, to be about $2.8 million. And it will come in very close, but it'll be a couple hundred thousand dollars higher. That estimate was developed prior to design and right now, you earlier authorized them $280,000 a few months ago to do design. And as that work has proceeded and has, scope has increased, that client has asked for a little bit more refinement in that project, cost has gone up a little bit. But again, I think you can see that we are usually having good estimates even before design and they're coming in close. So you'll see that coming forward. Another project is water isolation valve upgrade. Not a very sexy item, but very necessary. We have high water-sized pipes and high volumes here for drinking for all of our passengers and for firefighting. And many of those piping systems are old and aging, as are escalators, as you're aware of. And so we need to go in and renovate the valves for that system. So if we ever do have a leak, that we can isolate those sections of pipes and shut it off and get in and do it. Another project that's coming forward is the rental car art heli-c project. That'll be coming forward soon. That's, you authorized about a million dollars for that and you've been briefed on it very recently in December and shown that project. And it'll be coming forward for an amendment to a contract to allow the artist to actually begin the installation, fabrication of that project. And that'll be a good-looking one. I think we've answered all the questions about possible distractions to local traffic and things of that nature. And it'll have variable, high-energy efficiency LED lighting on that system. So it'll make the rental car facility look good, but we need to get that going so we can bring all of those projects together. And also, I noticed earlier in the discussion regarding the eighth-floor waterproofing project, there were questions about tax and sales tax and the number of jobs. And the way we've been handling commission memos is that we have decided not to make a forecast of that when we come in for design, but rather wait until design is complete and we come in for a construction ability to advertise for bids. Because by that time, we've got a good estimate on the project. That'll tell us what crafts are necessary, how many possible jobs, and the good estimate will then translate into a good estimate for sales tax. So you'll be seeing those numbers, not in the design memos, but in the construction authorization memos. That's it for me.
Great, thank you very much. We'll move on to our last agenda item and that is number eight, new business. And we have three members of the public who have signed up, I believe each to testify regarding the rail corridor. And I'd like to ask you each to come forward and you have three minutes. Please give us your name and your affiliation before beginning. First is going to be Lisa McConnell and then Georgine Foster and then finally, Robert Schuman. So Lisa McConnell, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Yoshitani and Port Commissioners. My name is Lisa McConnell and I am a steering committee member of the East Side Trail Advocates. I'd first like to introduce our group, our vision and our goals. We are a grassroots organization consisting currently of individual members. What we envision is a paved, continuous pathway that provides a safe public throughway on the east side corridor, offering community and business opportunities all along the pathway, not just at stops. At significantly lower public investment, we are advocating the trail be considered and discussed as the priority item it deserves to be and we are concerned about the nature of discussions with relegate, which relegate pathway planning to an afterthought, if a thought at all. My father blessed his big engineer's heart, always reminded me of the four Ps of engineering: planning prevents poor performance. Rail Advocates have already been making their case and the time for serious talk about a pathway on the east side corridor is right now. Who we are is not anti-rail. However, we do support the findings of the Puget Sound Regional Council's two studies done on this very corridor. A pathway with much lower investment, maintenance and operating costs makes sense now and in the future, whether a rail is in place or not. A pathway needs to be considered more than just a recreational trail, as it is referred to, even in the current MOU. We would like Port Commissioners to know that bike commuting compares apples to apples with other transportation options. Burke-Gilman weekday bike commute trips meet or exceed 23 metro bus routes in ridership. This trail has the potential to be the I-405 of the bike pedestrian system on the east side. But looking at the trail as a transportation commodity is selling its potential value short. A well-planned pathway invites visitors to spend time, and more importantly, money, in the communities it serves. Think of the pedestrian traffic we see on Lake Washington Boulevard on even slightly sunny days, or the amount of bicycles outside Red Hook Brewery just off the Sammamish River Trail. Many cities have already realized the synergy of well-planned pathways and local businesses. For example, the great Allegheny Pathway in Pennsylvania, despite tough economic times, had trail-attributed revenue in 2008 increase to $40.6 million and it had $7.5 million paid in wages. We agree that this corridor is a fabulous, once-in-a-lifetime amenity that deserves to be done right and done well, for the maximum benefit of all of us who are paying for the system. We are here to find out the specifics on the Port of Seattle's involvement in the east side corridor. We understood that previously, the east side transportation partnership was going to host the public process to help decide the corridor's disposition. Will that still be the case and what type of public process will now decide the corridor's disposition? We would like the Port of Seattle to announce as soon as possible the details and the schedule of the public process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And we'd now like to listen to Georgine Foster.
You beat the timing. Hello, Commissioners? I'll make mine really short because I'm a very good public speaker. I'll just sort of, I like to write all of my comments down and present them. So I would kind of like to know, how does the citizenry communicate with the Port Commission as there are no particular district representatives? Like I know I'm in Ms. Jane Higgs' area, but, you know, I can send memos off to her. So I was just wanting to know, for my own evacuation, how we can communicate with you because some of us do have concerns and we were wanting to, I guess this is sort of like, put my face to my name if you get any kind of emails.
Well, great. We will take any written comments you have and instead of just getting one per district, you get all five of us. So we will, all of us would welcome your emails and look forward to hearing from you. And finally, Mr. Robert Sherman.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Executive Yoshitani, my name is Robert Schirman. I'm from the group East Side Rail Now. We want to recognize your generosity in purchasing the BNSF east side corridor. Congratulations in reaching the memorandum of understanding with your regional partners. We hope these actions will enable passenger rail service on the east sideline in the future. Thank you for your perseverance.
Thank you very much. Are there any other issues to come before the commission on behalf of the commissioner? Seeing none, at 3:37, we are adjourned.